I'm going to call the public hearing to order. It's a couple of minutes late, I think, but I was feeling this format. Our hearing today is to the Dickerson County Board Supervisors on Tuesday, April the 23rd, in the Upday Conference Room located in the Dickerson County Educational Research Building. And this public hearing is to change the voting place of Nora to the McClure Quanis Park in pursuit of Virginia Code Chapter 24.2-306. Does anyone have a public comment on moving the voting precinct of Nora? It was at the Irvington High School and we no longer own the Irvington High School?
Irvington Elementary.
Irving, yeah Irvington Elementary, I'm sorry. Yeah, Irvington Elementary.
How long had the voting precinct been at Irvington Elementary? Years and years, hasn't it?
Years and years it has. All the schools always served as polling locations, so.
Okay. They used almost every one of the schools for voting precincts at one time. They're straight out to be in the eighth school building.
Did it back in the day.
Even when it wasn't a school.
It's probably what made schools start being no school on Election Day, didn't it? Because of using them.
Schools played with elementary.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's just not a lot of locations in the McClure area for accessibility and room and parking. And Quanis stepped up. And they had been an emergency location anyway.
I don't assume Hayside Quanis has, I mean Hayside. McClure Quanis has any objections to that, did it?
They had the primary down there.
They did, and Butch and the entire McClure River Quanis has been very accommodating with Kayla and with all the staff. And, you know, basically welcomed them with open arms. We're very grateful for that partnership with them, so.
It's good parking and everything down there also.
And then if somebody came handicapped, there's a accessibility to get in off that black top and all that into the building, yeah.
We need a motion of both of the public comment.
We'll leave it open just a few more minutes.
Got any comments?
Five minutes on it. All right, on page 12 of the, you know that voting thing where we're going to vote on this? Is, uh, top one. Address correct on that because is that, that's not the truck shop address.
It's not the truck shop address.
That's the address that they moved it around.
Yep, thank you for catching that.
I caught that today because I knew we moved.
We did. Let me pull up that correct address.
It's at the truck shop now.
It is. We'll make that correction.
I looked at that and I thought that's the old address on there.
Oh yeah, I didn't catch that. That's after that church, that little building, one of that church.
Yeah, I never did get through that one for the building. Was it your own west side or the other?
I think so. Then I went out there and wanted to prep it. I went out there and worked for a little while, then I came to Clintwood, Virginia. Worked.
Yeah, you did. This is the last call, I guess, for if anyone wants to speak on the moving of the Nora precinct to the McClure Quanis building. If there's no comment, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and second to close the public hearing on the Nora precinct. All in favor, vote the usual way of voting now.
I'm just going to be 321 DC Truck Shop Road.
And we will open our meeting for April the 23rd or 24th. And we just finished our public hearing. It's time for our regular meeting. And called to order and it's, first thing on the agenda is prayer. Would anybody like to lead in prayer? Rhonda, would you?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for life. We pray, Father, that you would be with us in this meeting. May we do all things that's good for the county. And we thank you for blessing our county in this day. And I pray that you would give us wisdom and understanding and discernment, Lord, to do that which is right for the residents of this county. Thank you, Jesus, for dying on the cross for us and for your glorious resurrection. We give thanks in Jesus' name. We pray and say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rhonda. Appreciate it. And the next thing on the agenda is the pledge. I'm going to go back to Chris.
Me?
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing on the agenda is I need a motion to approve the minutes, the joint meeting with IDA on March the 19th and our regular meeting on March the 26th. If you want to take them separate or together, it doesn't matter with me.
I move to approve both of them.
I will second that.
A move and a second. Is there any questions or any corrections or anything? If none, Mr. Hall, how do you vote? Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Thacker and Ms. Sless. And I also. And the next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And I missed, got an amendment. Do we have an amendment, Nora?
No, we don't have any amendments.
It's already there, okay. Is there anything to add to the agenda? Anybody need to add anything? If not, I need a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote the usual way of voting. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agreeing agenda. It's the approval of the expenditures, county administrators report, drug code, animal control report, fire and rescue report, litter control report, and building officials report, and also Mr. Sturgill's, uh, bill is included.
I think all of our local fire departments have been exceptionally busy.
Busy, yes, they have.
In the last few weeks. And we appreciate all of them for their time and effort that they've been out. The forestry department and any of the volunteers that works with them or even the neighbors in the area that fires have been in that has helped.
I appreciate them picking up, I noticed at Camp Creek they had picked up their litter. I appreciate that very much.
I couldn't believe how much litter they have picked up. It's unreal.
I know.
Forty-three miles and 600 bites. That is unreal.
Just amazing how people pick it up and they throw it out. You'd think people would learn. My car looks like a dump because I throw everything in the car.
Never throw anything out.
I was following a vehicle the other day and a 12-pack Pepsi box comes flying out of the bed of the truck, bounced over in the ditch line.
Okay, we would need a motion to approve those. If, if anyone wants to make another comment about them, that's fine, go ahead. But I appreciate what all of them are doing. It's, our records show that they're doing a fantastic job. I noticed the dog thing was that quite a bit also, what it had been.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Say it again.
I'll second it. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Ms. Sless, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker? And Ms. Kaiser? And Mr. Hall? And I also. Now, that takes us to public comment. Uh, Mr. Sturgill, you want to give the rules?
I will. Yes, ma'am. There shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. A representative of a group may have up to five minutes to make a presentation. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. Speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers. No speakers. Time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or a two-thirds vote of the board members present. Prohibited conduct. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language, use language which insults or demeans any person and/or when directed at public officials or employees when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures. Make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, engage in behavior that intimidates others, address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have a public comment?
I have something to say.
Anywhere you'd like to be. Ladies first or men first, however you prefer.
I know you don't want to hear this, but I'm going to say it.
Okay, give your, state your name and your address, please, for the clerk.
My name is Willman Stanley. I live at 774 Brush Creek Road, Clintwood, Virginia. This is about our taxes and our assessments. I'm not happy. My husband and I have lived in Dixon County all of our lives. And as of January the 3rd, we got an increase in our social security, 3%. That 3% went back to our insurance, most of it did. Dixon County has a population of around 14,000, 5,500 households. The poverty level here is 24%. Unemployment as of February was 3% in Dixon County. Why? Because we have no industry, we have no jobs, nothing here to keep our people. There's just no jobs, no nothing. I have a son that travels to Kingsport every day to work and a grandson that travels to Bristol just to survive and make their monthly bills. Prices of everything's going up. Groceries are up 21.2%, and they continue to rise. If you haven't noticed it, go to Food City or Walmart, anywhere. Eating out, it's gone up. That's a thing of the past for me and my family. Rent's up, electricity's up. And as you know, they have asked for a 5.1% increase as of July the 1st, and they'll probably get it. I know everyone's wrote letters, but whether or not it'll be any good, we'll see in July. Gas is going up, clothing's going up, everything's continuing to go up. The price of gas is up and will continue to go up. I know they, you all say that's inflation. Yes, it's inflation. But you don't have to add to it by increasing my taxes. I've heard that, uh, the taxes are only going to go up 1%. Is that from our old assessment or our new assessment? If it's from our old assessment, it still doesn't matter. It's a tax increase. And if it's on the new assessments, it's still a tax increase. If it's from the old assessments, then there's a lot of money wasted on the new assessments. Either way you look at it, it's a big tax. And before you all start increasing my taxes on my land, you need to cut your own budget. Mine's not been slashed. It can't go no further. Y'all done in, uh, in this year alone. Do you know what the taxes is owed back taxes? That's owed on property taxes for 2023? Do you? Has anybody looked? I know. It's a big amount. Somebody go collect those taxes. If you want to see it, I got it. What is owed? Selling two houses a year is not going to help much. And I don't want to be one of those that you sell my house. No way. But you need to start looking at your board and your spending before you start increasing my spending that I don't have.
And that's three minutes? If you all want to extend it, that's fine, but.
Extend it. It's up to you. It's fine. There are three minutes. Is it?
Is it already up?
Yes, it is.
Well, all right, with all that said and done, please reconsider the taxes before you decide what you want to cut through on my taxes because I'm not happy. Last three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment?
I'm not a speaker.
My name is Stacy Vanover. I live at 7052 Carter Stanley Highway in Culver, Virginia. And I spoke last meeting about the taxes. And I'd like to speak this meeting about the taxes. I believe that you are good people, each and every one of you. I believe you all try to do good things. I believe that with all that's in me, with all that I am. But there is a great difference between good things and right things. And what do you mean by that? Well, if you look at the road going to the ag center and the road going to the rehab clinic and the road going to the chip mill that's being paved, that y'all voted last week to go ahead and move forward on paving, that's a good thing. There's nothing wrong with that. Half of it's coming from the rents, half of it's coming from coal severance tax. What's wrong with it? Well, what's right with it? The coal severance tax funds should be used to pay for coal tax roads. The road at the ag center, there's no, that road's not been paved in years. That's always been a gravel road. There's no severance tax money going to be collected from it. But the road coming from McClure up to Sandy Ridge is in bad shape. It's really bad. And this is a good example of doing something good versus something right. Now, I travel that road. It's really bad. It needs a lot of work and it's just not right. It ain't right to use severance tax funds to pay roads that no coal gets hauled on. That's not a coal haul road. And it gets worse than that. I want to look at this, doing good things or doing the right things? In February, each of you voted to pay Hayside and not against Hayside, nothing against Hayside, $15,000, bring a fire in. That's a good thing. That's a real good thing. But it ain't right if you got to raise my taxes to do it. See, these are hard questions that we need to ask one another that need to be answered. Because 24% are living in poverty. 24% will not be able to go to the fair. And, you know, that's just where we're at. Right here's my question and some hard question, a couple new board members. I want to ask you to ask the hard questions. There's nobody going to vote you out. We voted you in. The hard questions that need to be asked is if we're paying $15,000 for the fair to come, where does the money go that people pay to get in to go to the fair and to ride the rides? Where does that go? Those are hard questions. But if the fair's good, nothing against Hayside. But that's where we're at. It ain't right if you got to do it, raise my taxes or anybody's taxes to do it. Hard questions. It gets worse. Last year, the swimming pool, the county paid $18,200 to maintain the swimming pool. That's a good thing. That's a good thing, right? Is it the right thing if you got to raise our taxes to do it?
And three minutes is up, just.
That was three minutes. I got a long list.
Well, they can grant you additional time. I was just.
Please do.
You want, uh, Ms. Sless?
It's fine, ma'am.
Mr. Thacker? I'm okay. And.
Yeah. I told you all we're good people.
We'll give you one more minute to finish, okay? About one more minute to finish.
Okay, I told you all we're good people. It's not just that. It's the, uh, swimming pool, the campground, the fair money. This is what we'd like for you to do. Instead of looking at the ag center and looking at the rehab clinic and looking at the chip mill, looking at the fair coming to town, look at us. We pay taxes. Look at us. Instead of looking at the swimming pool, $7,500 for the last four or five years we put to the 4th of July celebration. 24% of us are living in poverty. But how are we? What do y'all think we think when we see this? What do y'all think we think when we see this? The poor people of your county, y'all are swimming pool, the fair, the fireworks. Let me ask you this one. Here's a good one. How are we supposed to trust you? Because that's what's happening. And I believe you're good people. How are we suppo, I just think we just got our eyes off the people and quit asking the hard questions. And the hard question is where's the money go for the swimming pool, the fair? Who's getting it? We're paying for it. Where's it going? Those are hard questions. But you get a chance to do this right. And this is about doing the right.
As Rhonda said, as far as the taxes go, as of right now, your taxes have not went up. Your property value went up. Taxes have not. And yeah, we can cut out the swimming pool. We can cut out all the activities that the county provides. But we still have to fund schools, fire rescue, social services. I mean, there's so many things that we have to fund. And these activities, these kids, there's a mental health crisis. And some of these activities help mitigate that, gives them something to do. So... I would hate to cut all those activities out for these kids that participate in that. I know my kids have participated in the swimming pools and stuff like that. I know we got a splash pad, so that's going to offer some relief through the summer and an activity for some kids. There's a benefit to it. Whether we want to pay for it, I don't, I guess some of us don't. Yeah.
Mrs. Kaiser?
I don't know. It is tough. Very, very, very tough to decide what to fund, what not to fund. In order to cut and not cut, I mean, those are really difficult decisions. And we do the best we can. Public comment, we can respond. You do your three minutes and we do. You do your three minutes and we do have the option to respond back to you if we have anything to ask. And then, you know, there's a back and forth option there for that. I don't think we need to get into back and forth, this, you know, kind of like we've had previously, you know? We got to kind of mitigate that a little bit. So, but there is an opportunity for us to do a back and forth conversation and questions.
Let me get Ms. Kaiser.
I thank all of you all for coming, for being a part and wanting to give a public comment. We need to hear that. We need to know your thoughts. And to agree with my fellow board members on the tax assessments. You know, with COVID and everything having gone up, the tax reassessment time came at a sad time when everything was up. And I think that was one of the reasons that things may have went up. But we have not set the tax rate. We are hoping that we can cut it from 60 cents on 100, but we don't know how much because we don't have the tax books back. And there's nothing we can do until we get that. And most time it's already set by now, but we're running late in that. And I'm sure the commissioner can agree to that, that we are pushing. We are pushing deadline with the next taxes going out to be due by June 5th. And we're pushing and we know that. We just want to be here to help everybody. I will agree, the only family member that I have employed is not employed by Dickinson County Board or Dickinson County. They are... I have a daughter that's employed by the Dickinson County Schools. She was not a recipient of the holiday pay, even though the school got that day off. They was off that weekend. But I have another daughter employed, but she's employed by the state. She works in the county, but she's employed by the state. So by me voting for that and we all like to try to represent that that's a biblical holiday to give people a good day off, you know? And that, but I understand you all's concerns and stuff and appreciate you making your comment about it. And we like, you know, it's hard to go one-on-one. If you ask a question and we answer, you got another question, we got another answer. These could go on and on and on. And as you all know, on some board meetings in the last four years, had gotten pretty out of hand at times. But I make notes when people's making a comment. I make notes so I can think about what people are saying and what their concerns are and what they're questioning. We're not perfect, not by a long shot. Not one single one of us are perfect. But we are here trying our best to represent the county to the best of our knowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser.
I want to speak. The Code of Virginia does not allow us to lower the rate that you were assessed at. But our position is to set a levy. I've been here 16 years and I've never voted for a tax increase on any of my citizens in this county. And I have others that have voted, but I have never voted for a tax increase in this county. And I don't intend to this time. I want it to be reasonable for all of us. I live on a fixed income as well as a lot of other people. And I did vote to help the fair get the rides for the children. I've been there and they enjoy the rides and we did vote for that. And I'm proud to support the rides for the children because they get out of school to spend the day over there and they really enjoy it. And I don't intend to raise taxes. We probably will not be 60 cents. We don't know. And I know, working in the commissioner's office, Mr. Mullins is really pressed for time right now to get those tax tickets. Books ready for the treasurer sends out the tax tickets. The treasurer collects the money also. We don't collect the money. That is the treasurer of Dickinson County that collects the money. And I'm like you, I look at my report every month. There is a lot of taxes out there that should be collected. And I don't intend to raise the taxes till you can't pay your taxes. And also, there is a $150 off if you're 65 or older or disabled. There's a $150 credit off, but I think the time has lapsed on that as... April 1st. Every year you apply before April the 1st for $150 off of your taxes. Mr. Stafford?
Yes, I do have some things to say. I think this board coming in, especially me and Chris, we're new and we're learning and we're trying to take advice from our citizens. We have a meeting. I have one quarterly, Chris has one monthly. He switches it back and forth from Clintwood to HESI because his district reaches into both areas. We ask questions and we write this stuff down. We try to see what our citizens want. As far as the fair goes, I was at the fair last year. I worked around the clock with them to help get the fair ready. And you wouldn't believe the work that those volunteers put in, the time that they put in, the effort they put in to get that fair ready for the people. And I was standing there at the Ferris wheel and there was this little lady, she was elderly, had her grandchild on the Ferris wheel. And she said, "Take a picture," you know, with her phone. She was laughing, having the best time it was. And I said, "Boy, it's a nice fair this year." And she said, "It sure is." She said, "You know, a lot of these people take this stuff for granted." She said, "But this is the first time my grandchild's ever been on a ride. We can't afford to go pigeon-poursed. We can't afford to go Gattonburg. We can afford to come up here on this mountain because they gave her a ticket." So that young'un got to come to that fair and ride a ride and see the sights that without that fair, that child was never seen. And I think us as a county are obligated to offer our citizens some type of enjoyment in life. I mean, we can't be the only county in the state of Virginia or in the United States that doesn't offer anything for the citizens. I know, I'm not for tax increases by no means. I've got seven or eight tracts of property. If it goes up on you, it goes up on me. So I don't want to go up anymore. And we've not done that. But as far as being fiscally responsible, I think this board so far has been the most fiscally responsible board that you've seen for a while. I sit here and I've had to say no to some things that I would really like to have said yes about, but I couldn't. I had to say no. I looked at our county administrator and I said, "Do we have the funds?" He said, "No, we do not." The answer is no. You can't take money from Peter to pay Paul in this position. And that's my stance on it. Other people will look at it differently, I guess, but that's the way I look at it. If you don't have the money, you don't spend it. But that's all right. And thank you all for coming and making your comments. I do take each one of them to heart and I listen. And I will study on everything it's said and I'll try to do something always.
Ms. Les?
Well, I've already made some comments, but I agree with all of the four comments that were made. You can't hear me?
I'm not listening. I got to hear more.
That's unusual. I appreciate all of you coming out. And Chris and his wife are very good to be here about every time and I appreciate that. And I'm available to anybody 24 hours a day. They want to talk to me, I'd be glad to talk to them. I heard, I was at a meeting last night where a Brussels County board member said that he didn't take any calls. And I thought, well, why did you campaign or want this job if you're not willing to listen to people? But I'll take any, I'll take every call that I get. I don't think I ever return. I might get, miss it, but I return it. But I'm available to everybody for 24/7 unless I'm in church or at a doctor's appointment or something like that. And I'd be glad to talk, even if you're not in my district, I would be glad to talk to any of you. But what all four of these people said and what I said before is true. We want to do, and I think that we have tried to do the best we can for every resident of this county. But I asked you if you want to reach out to me, my phone. I've got cards and you can call or I can give you my phone number, my cell number. I'd be glad to talk to any of you personally. And I thank you for your comments. I thank you for you getting up Mr. Vanover coming and talking. He's been here before. And Mrs. Stanley. I appreciate all of you commenting. I want to hear what you got to say. I really do. And, but we do have to maintain a certain amount of decorum because of the last four years, some things did get out of hand, I thought. So we want to have some decorum and be civilized one to another and treat each other with respect. And I think that's what we all want to do. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. If there's no other comment or no one wants to make another comment, I'm going to close the public comment section.
Madam Chair, can I add a couple more things?
Yes, you may.
With the holiday pay, I don't, they don't get any extra pay for taking that day off. There was no extra pay for that. They just had the day off. They did not get any holiday extra pay except for the trash, the sanitation workers.
They had to work.
They had to work, so they did. But all the other county employees did not get any extra. Everybody's on salary. So there was no extra pay there for that holiday except for the sanitation workers. They did get a little bit off of that. And fire and rescue, and Terry, you've been in our meetings? We're trying to work it out. We're trying to get to a place where everything's sustainable and funded and operational.
I'm not just informing the rest of the board.
So we're working very diligently on that.
If anybody has an idea to help me on, I'm open all ears. And I know Richie and Larry, who's my phone number, who can give us any of the phone calls, I'll talk to any of y'all if you've got an idea.
Thank you. That's all, Madam.
I'd like to say I'll talk to anyone that calls my phones. I have two landlines, so you can call either one. And I'll talk to you or you can either text me, email me, whatever. And I'll give out pens and everything with my phone numbers on them. So if you don't have my phone number, just get it from the office here and I'd be glad to talk to anyone. If there's no more public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And we're not able to take any by phone, correct?
We are actually back up now. We've had no phone calls.
Okay. Okay. You want me to give the phone number to see if anyone wants to make a comment?
I've had the scroller run out.
Okay. So no one? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time. The next thing on the agenda is UVA Wise Nursing Presentation.
Hi. So we are seniors from UVA Wise in the nursing department. So we have a little presentation that we put together. So for our community class, we actually have to do a community assessment of Dickinson County. So basically, we went to HESI, Clinchco, and Clintwood. And we drove around and we interviewed employees of local shops and asked them, you know, what they think the county's biggest health concern is and like the resources that they have. And that's what we base this PowerPoint on. So Healthy People, it's 2030. So basically, that is like a set of objectives that are published every 10 years to improve the health of Americans. So this comes straight from the website. It identifies public health priorities to help individuals, organizations, and communities across the United States and improve health and well-being. So the Healthy People objective that we chose to do for Dickinson County is nutrition and healthy eating. So healthy eating can decrease risk for heart disease, obesity, and type 2 diabetes. So the goal of this objective is to improve health by promoting healthy eating and making nutritious foods available. And in this, in our presentation, we also put together like affordable ways that you can eat healthy foods because we all know that everything is going up. So eating healthy can be, you know, difficult sometimes.
So based off our objective being the nutrition and healthy eating, we used our assessment with those interviews to see, to kind of gauge what the community's perception is of Dickinson County health and nutrition. And we found that some of the major health concerns people brought up were diabetes and obesity. A lot of people also said that the county just doesn't have adequate resources for a healthy and well-balanced diet. So we came up with a community diagnosis, so kind of just putting it all in one sentence, that we believe Dickinson County is in a food desert, meaning that there is not enough resources for fresh fruits and vegetables, grocery stores in general, things of that matter. There are only two true grocery stores in the county and those are very spread out. So if you live in a town that doesn't have one of those true grocery stores, you know, how long is that going to take for you to travel to? And is transportation an issue for that person as well? That could limit their diet too. So some residents are not able to afford healthy food and instead opt for fast food or whatever is most viable for their situation.
So our outcomes are that they will be educated on healthy eating, whether that be like in the school classroom, wherever. Just make the reading level of it be to where they can read it. So I know coming from an area like this, like some people did not have the adequate education. So kind of toning down the reading level would help them understand it better. And then that they will also have access to healthy food. So based on our assessment, our interventions are a community garden and farmers markets. And based off our interviews, we had an older gentleman tell us that most people around here grew their own food. But we have also seen those 20-year-olds, 24-year-olds, somewhere in there, that they were not raised to have a garden. So community gardens will kind of give them the skills that they need to help grow that garden and get their healthy food. And then farmers markets is another one. I think the closest one that's not really a farmer's market is in Pound. It's that like little flea market. I mean, sometimes there's fresh food that grow there, but farmers markets would really help the people get healthy, fresh food.
And so we printed out a survey for you guys, a survey. The first survey is kind of a pre-survey assessing whether or not you think Dickinson County is or is not a food desert. And then the second labeled the post-survey is if Dickinson County had, you know, enough and adequate resources to have a nutritious and well-balanced diet, you know? How do your opinions on those things change? So. Are there any questions?
Good job. Well, I would like to acknowledge this young lady right here is my niece. And I'm very proud of her. All three of you, I'm proud of all three of you. They will graduate in May the 10th. They are pending the pending ceremony from UVA Wise with a BS Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. Two of them have a job. Emily's...
I'm looking.
She's looking, but I don't think she'll have much trouble. But we do have a farmer's market here in Clintwood.
Yeah, I don't think when we were doing it, I don't think they were set up, so we didn't see it.
Yeah, I understand. But...
And also, that's the one that I wrote down for the farmer's market, is to have it in like multiple locations across the county.
I think they're good. I mean, I've been to them. They're very good.
I like farmer's markets, yes. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Still, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Can we fill out these surveys so they can leave? They may have to study for tomorrow.
I got mine done.
You got your then, the post-survey due? May I speak, Madam Chairman? Emily, I think they have, I think if people contacted, I'm not sure how the program works, but the Dickinson County 4-H has money available that they get, I think through Columbus PIPs, that they use for kids bucks and seniors...
that they use for kids bucks and senior bucks, that they can take those coupons to go to the farmer's market. And the farmer's market now is in Clintwood, I think from 1:00 to 5:00 on Friday at the, uh, where Food City used to be. And that, so if people is needing, I don't know how that program works, how they get those bucks, but they can contact the 4-H office to find out, or the extension office, to find out if somebody is needing extra bucks to go shop. And I don't know how many of the people here are watching that may know that they have that. But like I said, I don't know the great details of that, but I'm sure that...
But thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations on your success thus far in, in school.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Older American Month. And we have a proclamation, and I guess I'm senior on the board, so I guess it's my honor to read.
We're catching up with you.
I'm catching up too, Shelby.
Oh. Older American Month 2024. A proclamation, whereas May is Older American Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Dickinson County older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generation and carry forward abundant culture and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our community through intergenerational relationships, community service, civil, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, ability, and background have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Dickinson County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. Reflecting our commitment to inclusive and continuity and now therefore the Board of Supervisors of Dickinson County does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older American Month. This year's theme is Powered by Connection. Emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connections on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. We call upon all of our residents to join me in recognizing the contributions of older citizens and promoting, promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusive, and support for our older adults. So Older Amer- Older American Month is, is May, and Powered by Connection is our theme.
And I make a motion that we declare this proclamation.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second that we approve this proclamation. Uh, Ms. Celeste, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker, uh, Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And I also. Okay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, and I think we have...
You have a handout at church.
We have a handout for this one. This is an appropriation for the park, parking lot and canopy for the Ridgeview Campus. And this is part of the Core Money. It is not, we will get this back when the Corps finishes their Haysa flooding project 202 plan. We are to get this money back, but we're going to appropriate it. And I was here when it was taken out and we were, had suggested, and our county administrator at that time suggested, we keep 200,000 for our in-kind work that we had done. And there was a motion made, no less, keep 600,000. And it pice with a 3-2 vote. And this is, we're going to give this 400 of this back to the school with us receiving it back when the Corps funding is completed and the Haysa flooding project 202 plan is finished. And it will come back to us, not to the school, it will come back to us. So we need a motion to appropriate this money to the Ridgeview Campus.
I make that motion that we appropriate it to the Ridgeview Camp.
Do I have a second? I will second the motion. Any discussion? If no discussion, Ms. Celeste, how do you vote?
Uh...
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And I also. Now we're down to appointments on the equalization board, and this is a...
Consideration of two alternates for the, for that. The training's coming up on May 16th, Mr. Melon, is that correct?
Yes, sir. May, May 16th will start somewhere around 8:35, 9 o'clock. It'll last approximately three, three and a half hours, give or take.
And what we will be doing is suggesting two names for alternates. If it's the board's desire to place alternates on this board to serve in the event that one of the five are not available to serve that you've previously appointed, these names would go to Judge Patton for his consideration, and he would make the formal appointment, so.
I would like to appoint Benny Kennedy. I talked to him, and he said he would be willing to do an alternate. Does anybody else got anybody? That was the only one I had. We should have two, I think.
You can have up to two, uh-huh.
Yeah, I think we need two alternates.
Well, I had thought of somebody, but I didn't get to see him today because I've been busy and didn't get to talk to him. But I had, uh, Jeff Newberry had crossed my mind. But, you know, I haven't asked him.
He's having some knee issues.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do you have any?
Well...
I'm, uh, good to hear.
Harry, would you be interested in the, as an alternate?
Who?
Harry Childers.
Harry Childers. Okay.
Do you need a second, Madam Chairman?
No.
No, we don't. We voted on the first one first.
Correct.
Learning. Okay. All in favor of putting, um, Benny Kennedy on as an alternate to Ms. Kai- or Mrs. Celeste?
Aye.
And Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
And Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And then all in favor of putting Harry Childers on as an alternate to... How do you vote, Ms. Celeste?
Yes.
And Ms. Thacker?
Aye.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And I also. So that gives us two alternates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll get a letter prepared and send that to Judge Patton tomorrow.
Yeah, you never know when somebody might be sick or an emergency.
And then you don't, if you want to choose it works, so...
Yeah.
They do their, it's real busy right when it first starts out and then it slows down. So it requires a lot of time right at first.
Mm-hmm.
I guess there'll be some people that's not able to be there. I'm sure we're doing the alternate.
Right. Yeah, they won't be able to make every meeting, so.
Okay. Now, the next item on our agenda is to adopt the ordinance removing the Nora Precinct voting location to McClure River Quanis Park. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion. That is, that is in my district.
Yes, it is.
I'll say.
And Richard, say. Okay. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, uh, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
And Ms. Celeste?
Yes.
And I also. Now we're down to closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Aye, Section 2.2-3711A1 Personnel Aid Maintenance.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second that we go into closed session at this time. And if my members need a break, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Maybe a final committee break right now.